... zero zero one and the Board of Educational Service Unit number nineteen will be held on Monday, February fifth, two thousand eighteen at six thirty P. M. in the board meeting room of the Teacher Administrative Center, twenty-three fifteen Cummings Street. The agenda will be kept current and available for public inspection in the office of the Secretary of the Board of Education at the administrative building during regular working hours. Pursuant to section eighty-four fourteen twelve of the Nebraska statutes, the public is hereby informed that a current copy of the Nebraska Open Meetings Act is posted in the board meeting room on the north wall. You ready? Please stand for the pledge of allegiance led by Vice President Ms. America.
(inaudible) to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Vice President America would lead us in the... Vice President America would lead us in the OPS vision and mission statement.
All right, first is our vision, every student, every day, prepared for success. And our mission, Omaha Public Schools prepares all students to excel in college, career, and life.
Roll call, please.
Here.
Gadding.
Present.
Holman.
Present.
Pearlman. Ryan.
Present.
Scanlon.
Present.
Smith.
Present.
Snow.
Here.
Seven present. Mr. Pearlman will be running late to tonight's meeting. Also, Dr. Holman will not be in attendance tonight's meeting due to a prior work engagement. I will now entertain a motion to excuse Dr. Holman and Mr. Pearlman.
So moved. Second.
It's a motion by Ms. America, second by Ms. Ryan. Roll call.
Aye.
Smith.
Aye.
Snow.
Aye.
Cassidy.
Aye.
Gadding.
Aye.
America.
Aye.
Ryan.
Aye.
Seven aye. Thank you. Moving on to school spotlight, Ms. Monique Farmer.
Good evening, Mr. President, members of the board, and Superintendent Evans. Tonight, our OPS Proud Spotlight is on Omaha North High School's football team. We'd like to congratulate the North High School Football Varsity Team. The Vikings defeated the Carney Bearcats twenty-seven to twenty in the Class A State Champion Game on Tuesday, November twenty-first, at Memorial Stadium in Lincoln. We salute the team for their hard work, for their teamwork, and for their commitment on the field. Tonight, I'd also like to take the time to recognize Milton Sarbaugh. He was recognized as the Nebraska Gatorade Player of the Year for football and an S. Mark All-American Student Athlete for football in two thousand seventeen. This award recognizes outstanding athletic, educational, and community service achievements by high school athletes across the United States. The organization wrote a letter to congratulate Milton stating, "This achievement is the result of not only hard work and dedication, but also balanced by the adversity and obstacles that come with perseverance." We salute Milton and the entire North High Football Team, and at this time, I'd like to invite Omaha North High School Principal Jean Haynes and Head Coach Larry Martin to the podium for remarks.
I better take him on up on that. He don't let me go first very often, but well, welcome. Thank you for the invite. Thank you Superintendent Mark Evans, the members of the Board of Education for recognizing our achievements as a team and school. We know that attaining and achieving goals requires dedication, persistence, resilience, and hard work. When we achieve these goals as a team, it means we celebrate them as a group and not of individual accomplishments. I'm proud of what this team accomplished this year, but know that it took many people to make this happen. My wife, Mari, our coaching staff and their families, Mr. Haynes, our principal, Mr. Savio, our athletic director, and the many teachers who regularly update and communicate grades so we can provide positive feedback and academic support to the student athletes. The academic coaches who work hard with the students after practice, the trainers and all the others who support students in practices and games. The thousands of fans who cheers us on in all kinds of weather, the parents, guardians, foster parents, grandparents, and others who share their young men with us every day. The best part of my job is seeing these young people grow with the support of their coaches, teachers, and the community. When I taught anatomy and physiology, I would talk a lot about feedback loops. Schools and sports are a feedback loop. When students develop confidence in the classroom, it carries over to the practices and competitions that energize the community. When students have the support of the school community and the facilities to perform at a high level of competition, it carries over as confidence in the classroom. No matter if it's North High swimmers finishing practice in the pool at seven P. M. on a school night, or soccer players lifting weights in December, or a student athlete striving to improve their understanding and grade for a class, middle school and high school sports provide the young people of Omaha the structure, support, and motivation and opportunities to take pride in their school, unite the community, and become tomorrow's leaders. Please join me in applauding these young men, not for just what they have accomplished, but what they will accomplish in our future. Thank you. So at this time, we would like to present the board members. We've asked some of our players to bring up a shirt and also a picture of our state championship team that I know that you're very proud of. So guys, if you would bring those up, please. He's not here, so...
He's not here, but what, his seat?
Just put it on his seat and then they'll give it to him.
Give it to the president.
Give it to him. Thank you, man.
Thank you, guys.
Actually, if we can get every player to come around and shake the board members' hands.
And we will be giving each of you an OPS Proud Pin as you come around.
What you want. The board members?
No, right here. They'll come forward, the board members.
Yes, okay. Tell them what you want.
I told him to stay there.
They're not.
If you think you... I made that wrong, so he goes up there. He doesn't have a backdrop.
Okay.
It's not that video.
No.
All his ones in the back.
Yeah, I thought you had food.
Should have. We should have.
Not with that honor.
Are you gonna get anything?
You should come get everything.
Okay. Coaches.
I can pop it out.
Stay here with me, sir. Stay here with me. Again, thank you, members of the board, for your support and making sure that those things happen. We are very, very proud of each one of you because of your continued support of all athletics in this great school district. And I often say, "We are the best school district east of the Rockies and west of the Mississippi." So thank you again for all of your support. Tonight, we do have with us members of the Alamo for Omaha North High School, and I'd like to ask them to stand. Ms. Bab Weinberg. Okay, Mr. Sailers, Chuck Sailers, and... Well, the safety person for the University of Nebraska football during the football season, he was just inducted into the Vikings of Distinction last year, so we are proud of each one of them for their continued support. And they had all games and making sure that the students and the principal do what's right. At this time, I'd like to ask Mr. Evans to approach the podium, please. Normally, you don't get a chance to ask the superintendent to come to the podium. But at this time, we have a token of appreciation that you might have to get one of these football players to take it back with you. Okay, I'm gonna let you open it, please. Oh, my! Wow! And the significance of this is, five of the past six years, Omaha North has been in the state finals, and we would like to present this number five to none other than the best superintendent east of the Rockies and west of the Mississippi, Mr. Mark Evans. Thank you. Thank you.
Board members, do you guys have any questions or comments? Mr. Scanlon.
I'd just like to congratulate you guys on going out there and coming back in the fourth quarter as many times as you guys did. Really shows a team, team environment, resilience, things that, as Coach Martin was talking about, you learn a lot from high school sports, and that'll teach you a lot in life. Just never give up, keep coming back, and expecting to win. You guys did a great job this year, and it was fun to watch.
Mr. Smith.
I also want to say congratulations. You guys did a great job, not just this season, but the past couple of seasons, in representing your school and representing this district, and we're very, very proud of you and the things that you do for Omaha North. And remember that this is just the beginning, it's not the end.
Ms. America.
I just want to add a congratulations. I know Mr. Snow and I were able to go down to Lincoln together and watch you guys play in the championship game, and you might have noticed us taking pictures on the field of you afterwards. But I think OPS tweeted out as the official picture for congratulations. But it was just really, really fun watching you guys play, and I think as Mr. Scanlon said, the way that you came back so many times over the season in the fourth quarter, just showing that you don't give up until you've reached that goal and persevered towards the end. So congratulations to you all.
Ms. Gadding.
Well, I want to congratulate you too, and some of you, I've had children play sports with way back when you were much younger, so it's fun to watch you grow up and see what you've been able to accomplish. But I also want to just say congratulations to the students who are seniors and are going on to play college football, and to remind everyone that, of course, we need to make sure the academics component is there, and so while you're working hard on the field, also work hard in the classroom, and great things will come for your future. So congratulations to all of you.
Mr. Evans.
Well, I just want to say thank you for, five years, at the first school year, I circled the state championship football game. My wife said, "Why you always have that date already circled?" I said, "'Cause I think the Vikings are gonna be there." And four out of five years, you were. And I had a great time watching you at the state championships, I had a great time watching you through the year. I can still see, I think there was about ten to eleven players on Xander Gray's back when he ran the last eighteen yards for the winning touchdown in the state championship. Am I right? Wasn't there ten or eleven? I think the whole team was trying to tackle him, and he carried them all in. It's been like that your whole season, I know, and really even your past seasons, and it's a reflection of your coaching staff, Coach Martin, the rest of the coaching staff, Mr. Haynes, who sets the standard for everybody. And by the way, if you, players don't know it, Mr. Haynes already knows your family, he knows you, and he'll never forget. So be careful wherever you go, 'cause if something goes wrong, he'll call your mom, your dad, your grandma, your grandpa, your aunt, your uncle, and he's gonna track where you're at, because he wants you to be successful, which I've heard several of our board members mention that, that success in life's what it's all about, and you're all on the right path, and you've got some great folks helping you. Thanks for letting me be a part of it for the last five years, and I have asked Coach Martin if I can go to the state championship next year too, to watch you again. He said I could still go in, even if I was retired, so I'm gonna go there and maybe volunteer on the sideline. Thank you for everything you've done. Wonderful, wonderful representation of OPS. We're proud of you.
I think we should all give these men another round of applause. Thank you, guys, so much. Best of luck to you, guys. Moving on, we will be moving on to board and superintendent communications, and we'll actually wait like a minute to let these clear the room a little bit, so they can get home and do homework. Fair enough. Mr. Evans.
Thank you, Mr. President. It's kind of hard to follow that. Great group of young people, and just, it's just an honor to be a part of a program that makes a difference in the lives of young people, and I've been to their pep assemblies, and I've seen what they do with the young men, not just on the football field, but during the school day, and so it's kind of hard to talk about it, 'cause I know that's what we're all about in OPS, and sometimes we lose track of how many fine adults that we have who help young people have success. So with that, let me go on to a couple of other things. I did want to mention, we had a budget advisory committee meeting last week. I wanted to thank the four board members that we had that were in attendance, Luann Gadding, Matt Scanlon, Ben Pearlman, and Mark Snow. So we had four of our board members that are participating with a community group that's looking at all of our budget and then helping us make some recommendations as we trim down some of our budgets to meet some other obligations, but I wanted to make sure I recognized our four board members, as well as the community folks. We've got about ten members of our community, the teachers' union, the classified union, principals representing all the different levels, and we're really gonna ask a lot from them so that they can come back and make recommendations, and I appreciate everyone that's been a part of that. Next, I wanted to mention to the board that we've been working on finalizing the bond proposal, and we've scheduled meetings with all board members, kind of a one-on-one, and handing out the details that we hope to have on the February fifth board agenda. I believe we're gonna have a total bond project that the board is gonna be okay with and happy with, and I think our community is gonna be very excited to see us move forward, so I wanted everyone to know that we're in that final phase on getting that bond project on the agenda. And lastly, I know I had several, maybe hundreds, of students that helped me with some weather decisions this morning at four o'clock, and I always want to thank you for that. I know those decisions seem easy sometimes, but we actually work pretty hard at it, and we start doing phone conferences, conference calls around four A. M. with, from the city staff to our staff, to local and surrounding communities, and I recognize side streets were a little bit slick today, but the main streets were pretty good, and I think tomorrow's gonna be much better, but I think yesterday's calling it off was probably a good decision as we look at what happened with the weather yesterday. So I wanted you to know, we appreciate your help, and social media and Twitter is nice to have all the helpers there, so thank you for that, and, Mr. President, we appreciate you giving me the time to talk tonight.
Thank you, Mr. Evans. Ms. Gadding.
Well, I haven't been out at schools much, but we have had a lot going on in the district, so again, the budget advisory committee, we've also been working quite a bit on the legislative committee as well, along with the legislative State Board Association meeting on Sunday and Monday, and then, of course, being snowed in Lincoln. Lacy and I were two of the board members in the newspaper that were not able to make it back. But I would say, from my standpoint, I think it was maybe one of the most productive working sessions that I've seen us have in a long time. We have a small group that is on the legislative committee of board members around the state, and we spent quite a bit of time on Sunday really working through issues. We heard from a former state senator on Sunday evening during dinner, which was also another just good reminder of the roles that we play. And then Monday, we heard from the governor and a number of state senators as well, and I think there's a significant amount of legislation in a short session, and I think maybe that's why it was so kind of jam-packed, because there's an awful lot of legislation happening. I don't know that much legislation that has been proposed to date will end up in the same format by the time we get to the end of the sixty-day session. I think there will be lots of shifts and changes, but I think it will be extremely important that school board members and the Nebraska School Board Association stay engaged across the entire state, because I think there's a lot of movement and a lot of different things in play. So I would just say that that was pretty critical. I had the opportunity to have lunch with a couple of state senators. I sat with Senator Grony and Senator Coulterman. We had good conversations around education and retirement, and then last evening, I was also able to spend some time with a district superintendent and some other board members from around the state while we watched the snow outside and ate dinner. So it was really a jam-packed weekend, but I would say that it was very important that we were there, and it will continue to be important that we're a voice at the table throughout this entire legislative session.
Thank you. Ms. America.
As Mrs. Gadding said, we, along with Mr. Pearlman, attended the NISB Legislative Committee Meeting and Legislative Issues Conference, which I would agree, it was probably one of the most productive years as far as having really, really good, deep discussions on education, education finance. As a state, how do we balance state funding, property taxes, and federal funding, and income taxes, so that you're not over-relying on one source of income for schools, which we do as a state? So just some really good discussions. And then yesterday afternoon, I, along with board members from Millard, Lincoln, Shadrin, and Ravenna, along with some school administrators and other community representatives, testified in opposition to L. B. eight fifty-one, which is the bill that would limit superintendent pay. So that was an interesting conversation that we had with some of the senators, but obviously a bill that is not, not being opposed by just what you would think of as big school districts, but by school districts around the state, because it removes the control of a board in the community to decide what is best for their district and puts an artificial limit imposed by the legislature. Two other things I just wanted to let you all know about, if you haven't seen online, tomorrow is I Love Public Schools Day, which is sponsored by Nebraska Loves Public Schools, so encourage board members tomorrow to get online and share why you support public schools and wear your Any Loves P. S. shirt if you have one. And then the other, I received, right after board elections, some letters that we were copied on from the Assistance League of Omaha. They do a program called Operation School Bell, where they help local students who are in need of new clothing for the start of the school year and winter clothing, when we get to winter, go out and get new clothes, new shoes, and stuff, so that they're ready for the changing seasons. And they sent us letters, letting us know about all the OPS students that volunteered during that event, and helped families and students pick out new things, helped with translating for families where there were language barriers, and I will pass those along so board members can see each letter, but there were forty-five students from South, two from Beveridge, one from Mars, seven from Burke, and sixteen from Benson that volunteered to help with that program, which I think is just really great and shows how dedicated our students are to their communities as well.
Thank you, Ms. America. I would like to thank everybody that sits on the legislative committee. I know that around this time during session, you guys have to go down there and testify and be kept up to date with the issues and the bills that are going on in Lincoln. So again, I would like to thank you guys so much. I know this is a really busy time of the year, so thank you, Ms. Gadding, Mr. Pearlman, Ms. Ryan, and Ms. America. Moving on to public comment, we have two speakers. The next item on the agenda is public comment. We have two speakers who have submitted request to speak forms. The board has adopted policy eighty-three forty-six, which provides public comment for a period of one hour. The same policy limits individual speakers to a maximum of five minutes. We ask that you respect the time limit. Mr. Ray will let you know when you have one minute remaining and you have thirty seconds remaining. We understand that people have strong feelings about the issues they come to speak about. We ask that you respect the opinions of all who speak and that you refrain from applause or other outbursts during the presentations. If the subject of your public comment is related to a particular student or staff member, we ask that you not mention the student or staff member by name. Instead, provide the information to Mr. Ray, Board Secretary, and he will assist us in looking into the, those types of details for you. If you do not get a cop, an opportunity to speak, I would like to submit a written commentary. You could please provide it to Mr. Ray. He will, he will make sure each board member gets a copy. As a reminder, we ask that you please state your name, spell your name, and your address before you begin public comment. Our first speaker is Katrina Jacobberger. Did I pronounce your last name right? Perfect.
All right, it's Katrina Jacobberger, which is K.A.T.R.I.N.A.J.A.C.O.B.B.E.R.G.E.R. I live at seventy-six ten North Thirty-third Street in Omaha, Nebraska, and today I'm here as the Vice President of the Omaha Education Association. And tonight, I bring you messages from the teachers, the OPS Proud educators from our district. We hear stories, sometimes in the media, social media, that gives a little bit of a negative teacher stereotype, and that is not us. That's not any of us. The increasing graduation rates, we did that. The helping our boys make it to state football championships, we did that. Higher test scores, we did that. We, the teachers, really do love being a part of this vibrant, growing district. We love our professions, we love our students, and we love coming to work every day, maybe even four whole days this week. And I would like to share a few of these stories with you.
And I would like to share a few of these stories with you. From a WAIAs teacher, "Today, I helped a student stay encouraged, focused, and excited about reading. Today, I helped a student feel successful. I teach in OPS because I grew up in OPS with amazing teachers who inspired me every day and taught me to love learning. Signed, Jennifer Student, now colleague and Jen's teacher." "Today, I helped Charles learn one-step equations. He will be ready to move on to two-step equations and eighth-grade math class. Charles's teacher." "Today, I helped a student learn more about counting carbs and calculating insulin to stay alive. Jonathan's school nurse." "I impacted a student today by caring for her outside of her education. Our kids come with needs that the classroom cannot give them. I bought two pairs of shoes and donated food, something that teaching doesn't count." Maria's teacher. "I add value to my special ed students by teaching them the skills they will need to be prospective members of society upon graduation. I impacted Savannah when she was able to walk away from a negative situation and say, 'I'm going to take five.' In the past, she would hit her roommate or use inappropriate language, and this is a huge step for her, and we've worked together in this." Savannah's teacher. "Today, I helped a student decide to become a teacher." Joseph's teacher. I would like to thank you very much for your time, and I would like to leave you all of these stories to read in your, can I give them to you? Okay. Thank you.
Thank you so much. Our next speaker is Larry Storer.
Good evening. Larry Storer, S-T-O-R-E-R, 5015 Lafayette Avenue, Omaha, Omaha Public School District. And I'd like to talk, as a taxpayer, Douglas County District, since probably 1965, and currently over $4,000 a year, and $400 a month, goes to property taxes. So I think I am one of the stakeholders that everybody in the social services industry talks about, school system talks about. But they seem to imply that stakeholders are only those people on the boards, and those people on community boards, and those people brought in from outside to recommend programs that you, of course, pay them for. You hire them as outside contractors. I'll give you an example. I have a relative in the system for quite a few years, largely involved with special education. And Omaha seems to like to hire a lot of people from outside, like Pennsylvania, public schools. Lincoln Public Schools did that also, for a special education school that was working pretty well. Called Success Schools Program, but they renamed it something else. It ended up being something militaristic for special education kids in a special education school, set off from everybody else, because the system doesn't know how to put up with special ed kids. Maybe rightfully so, but I'm a stakeholder in those areas too. But I'll tell you, from maybe 15 year, 10 to 12 years of being involved fairly closely with my relative in the school system and largely with special education meetings, doctors' meetings, various other things, and transportation, and transportation to and from group homes, being involved. But yet, under the special education laws, everybody seems to think a grandparent is really not entitled to information, not entitled to participate. Yet you hire people to come in and say, "We're going to help you find better families. We're going to help you find a family for those kids. We're going to try to keep them at home rather than in a group home." How do you do that when you exclude primary family members that know something about the child? So I'd like to reset your frame of mind for a new superintendent of schools. As you do this, think about including the family in the thing, whether they're a cousin or a aunt, but primarily grandparents. They are stakeholders. They are, some of them don't pay taxes, but they're just as much a stakeholder as I am. But let us be involved. If you want input, you probably get better input from me than somebody from Pennsylvania. I may have best practices better than theirs. I may know that child better than they do. So don't restrict it. Give your teachers the ammunition. Let them know that people like me involved with that child are a part of the process. So don't shut them up. Don't think they don't know anything. Don't think that the people outside of Omaha know more, because they don't. You're missing a big opportunity with a lot of kids. And then I want to end up with, the Success Schools at Lincoln Public Schools at Prairie Hills, it was a great school the first year my relative was there.
One minute.
The second year, they brought in the Success Schools Program, which was another one of those militaristic programs, point system, whatever you want to call it, that Boys Town experimented with, that worked for some, but it doesn't work for special education kids. So stop thinking everybody else is stakeholders. I'm sure teachers here know a lot more than some of those people from outside Omaha that you pay a lot of money for. Douglas County hired people outside also. So stop hiring outside people. Rely on the expertise you have here. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Storer.
Moving on to consent agenda, I will now entertain a motion to approve the consent agenda. That is before us. Motion by Mr. Pearlman.
Second.
Second by Ms. Ryan. Any abstentions? See you none. Roll call.
Snow.
Aye.
Cassidy.
Aye.
Gotti.
Aye.
America.
Aye.
Pearlman.
Aye.
Ryan.
Aye.
Scanlon.
Aye.
Smith.
Aye.
Ada.
We are going to be moving to our action item. We're going to be moving on to our action item, J1A, the recommendation, recommendation for superintendent finalist. Our consultant is also a superintendent as well, so he's finishing up a meeting, and Mr. Ray went to go get him out of the conference room. So just bear with us for a minute.
Do you want to share that?
It just said automatically, it was a picture of my granddaughter making, smiling at her mom, so. I think she must be big time. Yeah, it was pretty.
By the way, Mr. Evans is a first-time grandfather, so he'll be full-time grandfather after he retires.
Thanks. You know, I, I teach confirmation on Wednesday nights, and I always try to teach the kids a new word, and I've got a new one formed tomorrow night. It's bi-locate. How can you be in two places at one time? I, I know you know that I'm trying to run a AEA meeting in the other room via Skype, so, but I'm here now, and I'm very pleased to submit to the Omaha Public Schools Board of Education the names of two final candidates for the position of superintendent. The pool of candidates includes a number of highly qualified and experienced public school administrators. And the following two individuals are recommended as finalists after the board completed an extended, extensive review of their qualifications and work experiences of the 74 completed applications. Both candidates began their careers as teachers, served as building-level administrators, served as central office administrators. Both candidates have experience working in large, diverse, and urban school districts. In alphabetical order, the two candidates recommended as finalists are Dr. Cheryl Logan, Chief Academic Officer for the School District of Philadelphia, and Mr. Harrison Peters, Deputy Superintendent, Chief of Schools for the Hillsborough County Schools, Tampa, Florida. And I think Matt's going to put up some information here as well. Cheryl's on the left, Harrison's on the right. And I want to thank the board for their hard work in this, and certainly, I know Gary Ray wanted to be here, but I'm just across the river, so you've got me tonight. So, do you have any questions at all for me?
One second, before we, we take questions, I will now entertain a motion to approve the recommendations made for, made by Ray and Associates for superintendent finalist.
Thelmo.
Motion by Mr. Smith.
Second.
Second by Ms. America. Any discussion from board members? Roll call, Mr. Ray. Oh, I forgot about that. Dr. Holman couldn't attend tonight's meeting due to a prior work commitment, but she did submit a letter, and Mr. Ray will read that letter to the record.
I'd like to extend my apologies for being unable to attend such an incredibly important board meeting this evening. In my absence, please accept the following statement regarding my position on the finalist candidates recommended at tonight's board meeting by National Search Firm Ray and Associates. I, Siobhan Hallman, representative of District Four, approve the recommendation brought by my board colleagues and Search Firm Ray and Associates. I agree that the recommended finalists are the most qualified of the 74 candidates brought to the board. I continue to actively fulfill my duties on the board Superintendent Search Committee and feel confident that one of these finalists will be the next leader of our most deserving and remarkable school district. I look forward to the remainder of the search process, including the public meet-and-greet sessions and public interviews of the finalists.
Thank you, Mr. Ray. Let me remind the public that on January 30th, we will be having public meet-and-greet sessions with the two finalists from six, from 5:30 to 6:30. What is the time? I'm sorry, Mr. Ray. Five to 6:30.
Five to 6:30.
If I'm correct on there. It'll be from 5:00 to 6:30, and the public interview will be from 7:00 to 9:00 p.m. in the board meeting room. Roll call.
Cassidy.
Aye.
Gotti.
Aye.
America.
Aye.
Pearlman.
Aye.
Ryan.
Aye.
Scanlon.
Aye.
Smith.
Aye.
Snow.
Aye.
Ada.
Motion passes.
I can state that I've talked to both candidates on two, three occasions in the last couple of days. They're both very excited about getting the opportunity to visit again in the community of Omaha, so.
Well, thank you so much. This has been an extensive search, and with your guys' guidance and everybody at the table working together, I am excited with the two finalists that are before us today. So thank you again, and I think you have another board meeting.
I do, and I'll stick around to work with you again later if need be so.
Thank you so much.
Thank you very much for your, your work on this. You've been delightful to work with, so.
Thank you. Okay. Moving on. Moving on to J1B Legislative Update. Ms. America will start this off.
While Matt is getting that all pulled up, our Legislative Committee, which for our board, as Mr. Snow said, is myself, Mrs. Gotti, Mr. Pearlman, and Ms. Ryan, met a couple Saturday? No, we met on a Tuesday this year. It's usually an all-day Saturday. We met on a Tuesday for our kind of long meeting to go through all the bills that have been introduced this session, and then we will be meeting every Friday throughout the legislative session to go over bills, get an update on things that are happening in the legislature, and then may have touch-based meetings as needed, because, as you all know, things change very quickly down there. What we will be going over tonight is, we do have what we lovingly refer to as the Matrix, which breaks down the bills that we are monitoring, opposing, or supporting as Omaha Public Schools. And as things change, if there is a bill that we take a position on that has to change, or if there's a bill we don't take a position on and we need to, the committee will recommend those things and bring them back to the board. So tonight, we have our contracted lobbyist, Mr. John Lindsay, here, and he will go over our recommendations for positions for this legislative session.
Thank you. You, you all have the, the Matrix. What we've done in past board meetings is go through every bill, and, and I stand here and watch you all nod off, because it bores even me when I'm doing it. So what we've done, the Matrix is before you, with the recommended positions from, from the Legislative Committee that has gone through each, each bill. What I'm going to, what I'm going to do is summarize it, but I'm going to put them together in, in groups to add some context for you. And then the groups are going to be OSERS, Finance or TOSA, Property Valuations, Limits on Salaries, Early Childhood, Special Education, Student Discipline. And almost all the bills fall into one of those categories. So, OSERS, other, you will recall, last year, OPS took a position in support of LB 548, which, that bill would, would have merged the OSER system into the NPER system, and it, it started the discussions on what to do with, with OSERS. There's two amendments that have been filed this year. AM 1506 was filed by Senator Coulterman. What, and what that would do is it would withhold from OPS's TOSA payments an amount equal to whatever the calculated ARC is. The problem with that approach, it also has a couple of provisions in there dealing with retirement that are, that are problematic, but the primary thing that is concerning is that in TOSA, if that 20 million, roughly, 18 to 20 million dollar ARC is, does not hit our general fund, the result is that we, along with several other districts, lose TOSA dollars in the following year. And it's simply a way that TOSA works that it causes problems for us. And the recommendation from the committee, given that, is that we'd be in opposition to that amendment. The other amendment that I think you've had discussions about is AM 1529. It actually has not yet been filed. I believe it'll be filed tomorrow by Senator Lindstrom and Senator Vargas. That, and that would address, it would gut the original bill, so all those provisions go away. But what it would do is to address the underfunding right now of OSERS and basically substitute the long-range liability, which is the, the ARC, with another long-range liability, but effectively reducing the interest rate. It would allow OPS Board to bond for a, an amount that is calculated to, if paid in a lump sum now, it would eliminate future ARCs, that it would get us on track to 100% funding with a large infusion of, of capital now. The, the proposal would provide that it would come out of general funds, so still subject to, to the levy lids that, that what we're spending now are subject to, but it would, the primary benefit are twofold. One, the indications are that a bond could be, that a bond issue could perhaps generate or have an interest rate about three, about 3% lower. And when we're talking about the size of the ARC and the size of the unfunded liability, it's a, it's a lot of money, so it would save OPS taxpayers quite a bit in the long run, and more importantly, it would stabilize OSERS immediately, and so it's a double benefit. And that is a recommendation of support by the committee. Ms. America, I don't know if you want to take question, if there should be questions as we go along, or it might be?
I think it would probably make sense to do questions after each section.
Okay. And that is the extent of this section, so.
Mr. Scanlon.
On the, on that lump sum bond...
On that lump sum bond, that's the Second Amendment that you were talking about?
Right.
What is the state investing Board's recommendation?
They have not made a recommendation. The amendment has been shared with them and they are looking at it. So, we don't have feedback yet from them.
Okay, because I just, where we are currently with the market, we're in all-time high.
Right.
And, you know, not being the smartest investor, you don't want to get in at the top and it decrease, but I'd like to hear what their recommendation is before the board take a stance, just because we don't want to lump some amount into a high market and then maybe that's riskier than what we should be. So, I'd just like to hear their opinion before taking a stance.
Ms. Gadding?
So, a couple of things on this. It would certainly not take care of all of the unfunded liability, and that's really important that everybody understand that. It takes care of the portion of the unfunded liability that would help us to avoid those ARC payments. So, the goal would be that we would be, out of general fund, putting in a consistent amount, which would be an amount paid bonding-wise, just like we would have been paying ARC-wise, but infusing a more significant amount in that would be, say, 20 years of ARC, or whatever the number is, upfront, or 10 years upfront allows that money to grow in a greater manner than chipping away at it at only 20 million a year. And so, one of the things we talked about was where the state investment officer is out with his investments. And he has quite a balance of, he takes a much more conservative approach, so he's not in high-risk investments or those types of things. So, I think that's one of the positive things about the way he approaches investing. So, his belief is that you'll see a 7% to 7.5% return over the next 10 years. And I've talked to him about that, and that's where he sees his returns going. And we would be paying at least 3%, we think, lower than that on the infusion. So, we'd have the time value of money working for us over that 10-year period infused right away. And so, I think that's the takeaway, is what he believes he can get as a return, what we would have to pay on the interest rate. And while not pretty, at least we're infusing upfront. It's still taking away from our general fund dollars, so the taxpayer isn't paying anymore. We'll still have to have cuts, but at least we'll know what those cuts are, and they would be more consistent than what we know the growth of the ARC cuts will be over the next 10 years. And I think that's the greatest risk there. So, I think we should get his opinion, but that's kind of the background on some of the research work that we've spent quite a bit of time on and hired our own actuary to go in and look at the data on returns versus the potential of doing a bond.
Thank you. Ms. America?
I think Mrs. Gadding said, or, sorry, Mrs. Gadding said a lot of things that I just wanted to make sure everyone clearly understood, that as Mr. Lindsay said, it would fall under our levy lid. So, it would not be a tax increase of any type. It would be within our general fund budget under our levy lid. But, as Mrs. Gadding said, it would give us a clear, stable payment that we know we have to make every year, because we would know this is the amount that we infuse, this is the amount that we pay towards paying off that bond every year. Where right now, we have a lot of variability. The ARC can swing wildly from year to year depending on, yeah, can swing wildly up and up and up every year, based on projections, based on how the market goes, if mortality tables are changed, if the legislature changes interest rates, based on investment assumptions. All of that can make that amount change from year to year, where this would give us stability, which is something we've been talking with senators about for the past, I think as long as I've been on the board, that we have to have stability to be able to create our budgets and plan for long-term.
Ms. Gadding?
I think one other point that's really important, and I spent time yesterday with state senators working through this issue as well and just talking about it, is that the way we looked at it with the actuary, we would put in the infusion that would get us to no more ARC payments and would also, based on assumptions that we have, fully fund us at 30 years. So, I think that's really important to think about, too. We don't know what that number is because we need to wait for a little bit more data that will come to us after this January 1 actuary report. So, we don't really have the exact number yet, but what we're asking for is the authority to do it and then the permission from the legislature, if I'm correct on that.
Yes.
Mr. Lindsay, you're looking for guidance from the board tonight on a position to give you, you're looking for a vote tonight to give you guidance in the legislature?
Yeah, I think it's, I think the way we've done this is if there is an issue that needs to be polled, if there's a particular item that needs to be pulled from the matrix and voted separately, that can be done. But otherwise, we just go through the matrix and vote as a group on those. So, I think it's, traditionally what we've done is if a board member wants to pull an item out, that that's done.
Thank you.
If there's no other questions on OSERS, we'll move to Finance and TOSA. There's about, it looks like nine bills that are on the matrix that would have an impact. LB 829 is a bill that you've probably read about. It would generate, it would, excuse me, it would provide $1.2 billion in refundable tax credits that would be equal to 50% of property taxes paid. And primarily trying to get property tax relief in agricultural areas. The problem is, at $1.2 billion, it would consume about a quarter of the state's budget. In fact, I think you could close every state agency and still have to come up with more to cut. So, it's problematic and it would cause huge problems for OPS in the future, just because of the, they would have to do cuts to TOSA to try to fill that hole. LB 911 would allow any school board to adopt a local option income tax to support either property tax relief or to support repair maintenance of existing, repair maintenance and remodeling of existing facilities. LB 1001 would require an in-depth review of TOSA. One issue on this, TOSA probably needs to be revisited, but this one does not bring in experts, which is, when TOSA was created, they used experts that looked at best practices in formulas around the country. LB 1007 would allow school districts to exceed the levy by three cents for maintenance upkeep and rehab and construction within existing school facilities. LB 1033 would eliminate the learning community and would have some financial impact on OPS, both through programming and through requiring OPS to take over some of the facilities and have additional cost to OPS. LB 1077 would eliminate the $1.05 cap on school levies and allow each board to set whatever levy that board deemed appropriate. LB 1084 would increase the cap on allocated income tax from 2.23% to 20%. Again, it's an effort to move money into agricultural areas because of the very high agricultural valuations that have resulted in higher property taxes. Similarly, LB 1103 would provide foundation aid, which is just aid based on the number of students that goes to every district regardless of the resources and what their levy rate would be. And then LB 1108 would increase the sales tax and would distribute additional dollars in a foundation aid sort of manner. I've talked to the sponsor and he thinks it would produce about $9 million for OPS. Those are the Finance. I'd be happy to answer any questions on the Finance/TOSA section, if there are any. If not, I'll move on to Property Valuation. Historically, there's been a, there's been a move to try to reduce or somehow address the agricultural valuation. Values have gone up around the state, and they've each year tried to come up with ways, whether it's reducing it from 75% to 65% of market value, or all sorts of ways. But LB 1104 and LR 290 CA would change the valuation methodologies. They each do it a little bit different way, but the net function would be to lower valuations, primarily in rural areas, which would, over the long-term, divert dollars away from urban areas to, like OPS, to other districts. Any questions on that? If not, we'll go to Limits of Salaries. There's two bills there. Ms. America already mentioned one, LB 803, that she testified on. There's another one that would apply to all political subdivisions and would limit salaries and benefits of administrative employees to no more than 5% of political subdivision's budget. Remember, in a school district, administrative employees, although it's not clear in the bill, it could mean a lot more than what administrators, is what the complaint is. But it would go down into the schools, limit principals, assistant principals, anything that could be considered an administrator and would be problematic for any school district or really for any political subdivision. Early childhood and special education, LB 803 would eliminate the requirement that early childhood educators hold certificates, teaching certificates. LB 876 would increase special education reimbursements to school districts, would require 80% to be reimbursed, but it also anticipates if the funding isn't available for 80%. It has some provisions that intend to increase the reimbursement. As you all know, special education's a huge cost for OPS. 877 would increase the calculation of state aid within TOSA for child, early childhood education. And finally, two bills dealing with student discipline. One would change the procedural requirements for student discipline, and that's being reviewed by legal counsel to see what, how it would change, how you have to deal with the student discipline. The second one would establish a system for collecting data on school disciplinary measurements and law enforcement referrals. So, that's what I have. I'd be happy to answer any questions about any of this or anything else that's included in the matrix.
Ms. America?
And just to clarify for those who don't have the matrix in front of them, we are recommending being opposed to LB 803, which is the bill that would remove the requirement that early childhood education teachers have a teacher's certification.
Mr. Scanlon?
I guess, kind of along the lines of not being able to see the matrix, and this is, a lot of information being presented, it's a lot of information being presented to the public, and we don't have it up there. I think that since we've had the change from our last open meetings platform to this one, I think having presentations up there has declined. And I think it's something that, you know, it's available online, but I don't expect everybody in the audience to bring their laptop in order to see these different presentations. But I think we need to figure out a way to make sure that it's up there, because, I mean, we just went through a number of bills. We didn't touch on what our stances were, what our recommendations were, or the description of it. I mean, Mr. Lindsay did give a brief description, but it's much more information on that presentation. And I think we just, we need to do much better, I mean, that's obviously not big enough. I just don't think this platform has been giving us a very good, or we haven't been utilizing it, if it does give it to us, to educate the public of what we're looking at. And we need to do a better job of that. And I've, just when I go to review different agendas, I have a hard time getting them to, you know, to come and present easy PowerPoint presentations. So, I think that's something that we need to look at in order to make sure that everybody understands where we are and what we're recommending for a wide variety of topics.
And we can definitely start doing that for future board meetings, having those presentations and recommendations for everyone in the audience to be able to read from the projector. Ms. America?
I do want to say we kind of did the different format with grouping the bills together because we had received feedback that board members felt like they were getting way too much information that was already in front of them related to the legislative proposals. But if you'd like, I can run through in numerical order and say whether we're recommending, supporting, or opposing, if that would be helpful.
Mr. Scanlon?
I know it's in front of board members. I forgot my laptop today, so it's not necessarily in front of me. And we want it to be out in front of the public. That's what I'm saying is, that's why I would like that to be up there and accessible to the public. That's where I'm coming from, not necessarily that board members can see it. We want the public to see it and try to be as transparent as we can with our presentations.
Thank you. Ms. Gadding?
So, it might be helpful. I think maybe one time we did this where we had different colors for whether it was monitor, oppose, or support. So, it might be helpful if we color code those, so people are looking through stuff quickly. I'm just thinking that might be helpful. And then I would just encourage everyone in the audience, as I said, there's an awful lot of legislation this session. It is very complex. What you see in the bill today may not necessarily, I would guarantee you, probably isn't necessarily what's going to come out at the end. Some are put up simply as starting points of discussion, like the bill that was, one of the bills that was presented yesterday. And some of them are just a definite difference between urban and rural. And so, the one that Ms. America just mentioned is clearly one that is heavily supported on one part of the state where they can't find early childhood workers for classrooms. So, there's just a difference of opinion sometimes. Sometimes we're all together, sometimes we're not necessarily. And so, I think it's important that when we understand these bills, we may take a position. You may not see every school board take that same position, but it's definitely because of the paradigms that we work with versus where somebody else may be. So, I would encourage folks to look at that, and we'll work maybe on the color coding. This was, this is our first time through this session, and bills and amendments are getting dropped every day, right?
Yes.
So, it's sometimes so fluid that it's 15 minutes away, right?
Yeah, this is, we've been through, Rochelle, Malin, and I have read all of the bills that have been introduced this session, but Mrs. Gadding is correct that an amendment can be introduced any day up to the second to last day or third to last day of the legislature. So, we also read every amendment that is introduced because sometimes the mischief is there. So, I would also reiterate, I've said it before, but if you, if any board member has a question about any of the legislation, whether it's now or as we go through the session, please feel free to give me a call, give Rochelle a call. I'd be happy to walk you through it or give you whatever background you need on it. So, we're a resource for you, so please feel free to do that.
Mr. Perlman?
One proposal I just want to point out, mostly for teachers in the classroom, is LB 999. Could have a significant impact on student discipline, have a practical, real effect on student discipline in the classroom. So, that's one bill that I'm looking at closely, and I would just urge teachers and folks working in the school to take a look at that one closely. And let the board know if you have any position on it.
Thank you, Mr. Perlman. Thank you, Mr. Pearlman. I will now entertain a motion to approve the committee's new recommendations as represented in the attached document.
I move we approve the legislative committee's new recommendations as represented in the attached document.
We have a motion by Ms. America.
Second.
Second by Ms. Scotting. Discussion?
Mr. Scanlon?
I would like, I don't have it in front of me, but the, the investment that, for the OSERS, that was talking about, 548, Amendment 548, to be pulled out and voted on separately, that's the one that I had concern.
Are, just to clarify, are you asking for both amendments, or just the amendment regarding the infusion to be pulled out and voted on separately?
Yeah.
Okay, AM 1529.
Yeah, just the one that's the infusion. Yes. I'd like to have that one pulled out and voted on separately, just because of my concerns, and I don't want to, I don't want to have to vote no, just based off of that one.
Fair enough. Ms. America, would you be okay amending your motion?
Sorry, yes.
Ms. Scotting?
Yes, you want to read us the amended motion, so that, or maybe we should just have a new motion?
We'll do a new motion.
I will withdraw my original motion, and make a new motion.
Okay.
The new motion would be that we approve the committee's new recommendations as represented in the attached document, with the exception of AM 1529 to LB 548.
Is there a second?
Second.
So we have a motion by Ms. America, second by Ms. Scotting. Discussion?
Mr. Scanlon?
I'd just like to reiterate that my concerns with this amendment, or I guess, we're not voting on that one yet, sorry.
Mr. Ray? Roll call?
Scotting?
Aye.
America?
Aye.
Pearlman?
Aye.
Ryan?
Aye.
Scanlon?
Aye.
Smith?
Aye.
Snow?
Aye.
Cassidy?
Aye.
Eight aye. Okay. So next will be, I will now entertain a motion to approve the committee's new recommendations as represented in the attached document for LB... Sorry. I will now, I will now recognize Ms. America for a motion.
I move we approve the committee's recommendation of support to AM 15, on AM 1529 to LB 548.
Is there a second?
Second.
Discussion? Mr. Scanlon?
Now, I'd just like to reiterate my concern with the amendment of making a lump sum contribution at the height of the current stock market, without a recommendation from the state investors' board, because I think that's what kind of got us into this situation of having a shortfall, is not listening to sound, or getting sound financial advice from the professionals. And so I'd like to, before I can say a lump sum's a good idea, I'd rather have that public recommendation from the state investors' board.
Ms. America?
I would just like to say, there, even if we support this as a board, it has to pass through the legislature still, which is going to take some time. And then if it passes through the legislature, it would have to go into effect, which also takes some time after the bill is passed. We would then have to go out, and after the statute, the amended statute becomes official, we would have to go out and do a bond sale, which takes time, and then get the proceeds from the bond. So this wouldn't be us infusing dollars in tomorrow, or next week, about 10 months or so? Yeah, to let the whole cycle run out. So we, we don't know exactly where the market will be in 10 months, but we also have to look at the fact that we gave the State Investment Council essentially a large infusion when we rolled the funds, the investment authority, over to them, and gave them the responsibility to determine that investment mix of what was the right mix of investments, so that there was some risk, but not too much risk.
Mr. Scanlon?
And I understand that the market's unpredictable, but what works from a budgeting standpoint for stability with OPS might not make sense from an investing standpoint. So I'd, you know, rather hear from a professional investor, you know, what, what would be the best course of action. I'm not saying it's right or wrong, and I'm not saying where the market will be. I'm just saying that, you know, yes, it'll be convenient budgeting-wise to know what we're going to have, but maybe that doesn't make sense investing-wise. I don't know the answer to that, and I'd like to hear a professional, hear a professional's opinion on that.
Duly noted. Any other? Mr. Ray? Roll call?
America?
Aye.
Pearlman?
Aye.
Ryan?
Aye.
Scanlon?
No.
Smith?
Aye.
Snow?
Aye.
Cassidy?
Aye.
Scotting?
Aye.
Seven aye, one no. Thank you, Mr. Lindsey. We have no information items on the agenda. If you look at your receipt of reports, we have the district free and reduced lunch report for 2017, 2018. Now I will entertain a motion for a closed session.
I move that the Board of Education go into closed session for the protection of the public interest, and for the prevention of needless injury to the reputation of individuals, to discuss with the superintendent, secretary to the board, Lane Plugey of Ray &amp; Associates, Connie Kenoke, and legal counsel, negotiations, pending litigation, and legal advice.
Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Ms. Cassidy?
Roll call?
Pearlman?
Aye.
Ryan?
Aye.
Scanlon?
Smith?
Aye.
Snow?
Aye.
Cassidy?
Aye.
Scotting?
Aye.
America?
Aye.
Seven aye. Thank you. Let me remind, let me remind the board that the purpose of our closed session is for the protection of the public interest, and for the preventions, prevention of needless injury to the reputation of individuals, to discuss with the superintendent, secretary to the board, Lane Plugey, and legal counsel, negotiations, and Connie Kenoke, regarding negotiations, pending litigation, and legal advice. Let the record reflect that the board went into closed session at 7:48.